Good evening, I call this May 13th, 2024, the State Board of Education Director, Adam Kevins. Call the role.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Conklin?
Here.
Ms. Glavulek?
Here.
Mr. Feller?
Here.
And Mrs. Johnson is here.
Please rise for the legislative agents.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Motley, I believe you have some presentations?
Yes, it is my pleasure to have a couple of presentations for our Board of Education members tonight. First, we have Aspire and our ESOL program with, I believe, Ms. Stanton and Ms. Ottawa, is that correct?
Bedew.
Bedew. Okay, thank you for coming this evening. The ladies were actually here, I want to say back in March for a presentation maybe, and you were so patient with us. It was an unexpected evening and took a lot more time with our first presentation, or I guess, public comment. And we invited you back to share a little bit about our Aspire program, which is housed, for those of you who may not be aware, right here in the annex of 4747. So the floor is yours, and I believe we have your presentation already loaded, so thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, we appreciate you having us here this evening as well. I'm Jess Barabutel, and I supervise the Aspire programming at Penn to Career Center. So I'm honored to be here tonight to speak with you. And I was just going to touch base a little bit on what we do as a whole for the Aspire program. So Penn to Career Center continues to thrive as a hub for career and technical education excellence. We have state-of-the-art facilities and offer innovative programming. So while Penn remains at the forefront of preparing students for workforce and higher education opportunities, the Aspire grant for us has been a catalyst for positive change. We provide vital resources to support student success. And our Aspire grant is fairly large. We service 900 students in the area of Lucas and Wood County. We're in most of the correctional facilities, and it's a well-respected grant. We've had a partnership with Slovenia for well over 10 years. I'm new to the position, but I taught in the program for the last nine years and just stepped into a new role this year as supervising it. So it's been a long, well-established program. Through this partnership, we've witnessed remarkable benefits. We have so many countries that are represented within our ESOL program at Slovenia. I think we're almost at like 40 different countries that we service. We're here today to emphasize the significance of our partnership, as well as share some of our accomplishments and its profound impact on the community. This collaboration not only enriches the educational experience of ESOL students, but it also fosters a sense of inclusiveness and diversity within our district. Beyond academics, our partnership nurtures a sense of community and belonging. By embracing diversity, we cultivate a school and program culture where every student feels valued and respected. So together, we're providing ESOL students with the support and resources that they need to excel academically and integrate seamlessly into the school and communities. So I'd like to introduce Najwa Badawi. She coordinates most of the programming for ESOL. And Julie Stanton, to take over, she does our data entry and make sure that we can see those student outcomes. So that's an important piece to keep our company. So, thank you.
Good evening, thank you so much for giving us this time to update you as far as what's happening in the ESOL program. Julie and I have taught ESOL for the past about 23 years.
Since September 11th, 2001 was our first.
Yes, at Washington Lowell Schools, yes. So we put together just a few slides. I know we have limited time. The program is about 30 years old here in Slovenia, although we did find some paperwork from the 1980s.
From the 80s.
So we're not short.
Older.
Yeah. Since 2020, we served over 700 immigrants and refugees from all over the world. And so far this year, as of last week, we know for '24, we served 162 students, adults from all over the world. We have consistently met and exceeded the state performance requirements. A lot of our students, we define goals, long-term and short-term goals, and many of our students want to find jobs in this country, or they want to become American citizens. And especially this past year, every single one of our students who wanted to find a job was able to find a job and paying taxes. So this was a beautiful thing. And also, we teach citizenship. So some of the things, well, maybe that's the next slide. Most new arrivals live in Slovenia and send their kids to Slovenia schools. So in teaching, I've been teaching again for 23 years ESOL, and most of our students really come to this country for one reason, for a better future for themselves and for their kids. So they sign up their kids at Slovenia schools, and then they come to us for instruction, for English as a second language. Some of the countries represented this academic year, you'll see on the slide, Mexico, Cameroon, Japan, Ukraine, Russia, Palestine, Colombia, Jordan, Brazil, Haiti. We've had an influx of Haitian refugees the past two or three months. Lebanon, Syria, Cuba, Greece, Yemen, Turkey, Egypt, Venezuela, Dominican Republic, Iraq, Afghanistan, Costa Rica, Iran, and China. So we have many United Nations here.
And everyone gets along.
They do.
That's the beauty of it. Ukrainians sitting next to Russians.
Well, at the beginning, it was a little dicey. It was dicey, but then we talked to everyone. We said, let's see politics behind. We have a very difficult political situation in Ukraine and Russia, and everybody gets along. It's really wonderful.
Yeah, it really is.
So what we teach, we teach grammar, we teach comprehension, vocabulary words, spelling, idioms, thematic units, American history, American government, and we also have a separate class for those students who want to become US citizens. And I'm happy to report that every single student who took the citizenship class this year passed. They're citizens, and now they're American citizens. And the last one was last Thursday. She passed for citizenship class. In fact, one of our students here in Slovenia was asked to be the keynote speaker about two months ago at a citizenship ceremony. Coming up, we have, oh, and also we teach, of course, conversation every day and US civics. We also, so class ends, instruction ends next week, but we have a summer institute lined up for the month of July, would be teaching customer service, but in the framework of ESL, of English for speakers of other languages. Because we realize that this is a transferable skill, and you need to know how to interact with clients and customers regardless of what field of expertise you're in. So what we do is, okay, when students come to this country, they share with us that the number one problem they struggle with is isolation. So we try to cultivate a culture of community and a sense of belonging. And so what we do each month, we teach thematic units, and we take our students out into the community so they can practice their newly gained skills with somebody outside the classroom. So we took them to the library, to the main branch library. We had a full tour of the, and everyone got library cards. Of course, some of our citizenship, some of our students who passed their citizenship test, we have a celebration almost for every single time somebody passes their citizenship test. American holidays and culture, we celebrate all holidays. We celebrate Christmas, Ramadan, we celebrate Chinese New Year, we celebrate Easter, we celebrate all holidays for every culture and country. So this is, we took them to the Manner House a few months ago to show them how it's decorated, how, you know, something that's typically decorated for Christmas. Of course, we had a Halloween.
Everyone participates.
Everybody. And somebody got.
Yeah, this man's from Ukraine, he had the ears, he probably got them.
And of course, we, you know, we're planning to take them to the Botanical Gardens next week, but this is from last year. Every year, we have an end of the year function at the Botanical Gardens and the receipt certificate. So we have a pizza party, we take a walk, get some exercise, fresh air and exercise, and then we have a pizza party, and then each one of the students gets a certificate. And then we took them, we were able to get free lights before Christmas zoo tickets, so we took them to the zoo. And also, here in Slovenia, we took them on a tour of Lord's University, we took them to the planetarium, and we took a tour of Lord's University because so many had questions. A lot of them have kids, adult kids, some, and they wanted to see, you know, other, of course, university or city, but they wanted something more personal, something smaller. So we took them on a tour of Lord's University, and they actually met the president, who just happened to be walking by, and they thought that was so great. We took pictures of the president, with the president of Lord's University. And again, this problem of isolation, they're strangers in a strange land, they don't know what to do when they come. So we try to make it feel like a home away from home, and so many lifelong friendships end up happening. Sometimes we get calls in the summer or on the weekend, like, you know, teachers, we're having coffee at the mall, can you join us? But it's okay, go ahead and, you know, socialize, as long as you do it in English, we're happy. Sometimes we enjoy them, and sometimes we don't, but it's really, it's really great. So we have six different levels. We have medical doctors from China, from Jordan, and then we have students who've never even been in a classroom setting. So the way it works, they call the department's number here in Slovenia, and then they have to attend an orientation, and we have to give them a placement test. And according to the results of the placement test, we place them in one of three classrooms that you make available for us here in the department. So we place them either in the beginner level, the intermediate, or the advanced level of English. And we start instruction. And also, for Thanksgiving, we had a, we were invited to join in a Thanksgiving celebration. So we went, and they love coming here. They don't have to be here, but they, I mean, we have a lot of students attending. I think on average, what is our average attendance level? Because we have morning classes, we have afternoon classes, and also we have evening classes, but the evening classes are held at Washington Branch Library. Because a lot of immigrants live in that area, so we just want to make it easier for them. They work during the day, but they still want to improve their English proficiency, so we have our evening class at Washington Branch. But on average, we have about 40, you know, every day.
Across the board, yeah.
Yeah. So they love being in Slovenia, they love Slovenia schools, and we're just honored that we're part of their journey to success here in this country. You guys said that if you have any questions for us, we'd be more than happy to answer your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and being involved.
Thank you.
It's amazing work I have to share. I can't imagine having so many different languages in a room at one time, and then trying to figure out how to help them all learn one language. I assume you don't speak all the different languages.
No, no.
I just say I speak languages.
No, we only instruct in English.
So it's almost like an immersion approach.
It is, it is, yeah. Total immersion, exactly. And, you know, they progress, because as I said, we give them a placement test upon registering, and then we have to give them a placement test, we have to give them, sorry, an exit test towards the end of the school year, and then we measure progress. And most of our students move up, at least one level. So it's, with language, use it or lose it. So the more they attend, you know, the better they get. But we still have to emphasize the fact that we always tell them, look, you have three months almost up, you have to continue to use English during the summertime, otherwise, if you decide to come back in September, you know, you're not going to be that great, you know, as far as proficiency. So you have to use it in the summertime. Try to watch American TV, listen to American music, interact with your neighbors. So, you know, we do our best, we try to encourage them.
I can tell the different skill sets when I walk through the annex, because sometimes at the beginning of the year, folks are very shy.
They're very shy, yeah, they're very apprehensive.
They want to say something, but later on, they're like, hello.
Exactly.
And then you get, hello, how are you? So they're still, they're able to witness that. So thank you for the good work that you're doing for so many people.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have representatives here from the Slovenia Prevention Alliance. And I think Tori, you take him to lead.
I think I'll, yeah, I'll take the lead if I can finish up. Hi, I'm Tori Daggett, I'm the Executive Director for Slovenia Prevention Alliance, and this is Liz Yaw, she's Operations Manager. And I know all of you are pretty familiar with us, but I'm hoping that we can give you a little bit more information, some things you may not have known about us. So we'll see if this works. First, ask them to do it. Slovenia Prevention Alliance is a nonprofit, but we are a 501(c)(3) youth prevention coalition. And we are credentialed and licensed with the state of Ohio to perform prevention and behavioral health services. We really focus on our prevention services, and for anybody who is not, for matter what prevention is, prevention essentially is act of empowering our youth to successfully meet life challenges by partnering with families and the community to create healthy environments and behaviors. So that's pretty much what we achieve in a nutshell. Let me see here. Because we are licensed through the state of Ohio, we do have a lot of mandates, we do, and we try to achieve the best of our abilities. We always have a service, all our program is supervised by our Ohio Licensed Prevention Specialists. We also always use evidence and research-based programming in all of our models when we're creating any of our programming. I know we are down the hall in just our two small offices, but we are a very small but mighty staff. Within Lucas County, we, 14% of credentialed and licensed prevention specialists have come out of Slovenia Prevention Alliance. So we are one of the leading organizations as far as credentialing and licensing in our area in Ohio. We are also lucky to be involved with, we are part of state and national organizations, prevention organizations, so we do keep up on the latest science and research that are coming out of prevention, and we all know it is a newer field, so there's, it's always changing, as you guys do in education with youth, there's always ebbs and flows, and the needs change, and so we meet those needs. We are also very fortunate to be funded partly by the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board of Lucas County, they're one of our biggest funders. And we also, we have a federal grant, we periodically have state grants, local grants, in addition to our fundraising that we do throughout the year. So that is always fun, the fundraising, but we really focus on certain aspects of youth prevention. Youth prevention is always beneficial in any aspect of developing youth, but in our scope of practice, we really focus on certain prevention areas. Prevention of alcohol and drug usage, we focus on suicide prevention, bullying, we also work with mental health, coping skills, healthy relationships, responsible social media usage, and that's really our scope of practice right now. Again, we do ebb and flow, you can have the needs of our community. And because youth prevention is so multifaceted, we have so many things going on. We not only do youth programming and events, we also do programming for parents and families, and we also do environmental services throughout the community, helping to make our environment healthier and safer for our youth. So we're continually doing so many things, but today we will highlight a little bit of our youth programming. So I'm going to hand this over to Liz, who is going to kind of give a little idea of what we do with our youth.
Thank you. I'm lucky enough, I get to talk about what I call our crown jewels of what we do. We do programming throughout all the community, as Tori said, from the youth, parents, community, but we involve everybody in this. But I think our crown jewels are youth groups. We have two different types of youth groups, and those youth groups have meetings in all of three of our junior highs and two of our high schools in Slovenia, Youth Above the Noise and Core Committed. So all of our youth groups do focus on providing students with knowledgeable skills to become socially emotional good people. So whatever they do, they have the skills to overcome what's going on in the world around them, and we're there to help them through that. We use science-based research with leadership training and skills development for them. And we also empower the students to adopt healthy lifestyles, as we hope that they take that home with them, and that filters out then into the rest of the community. So why do we have two youth groups? We all have different personalities, and we all fit into different niches. So while our youth groups pretty much talk about the same ideals and leadership and skill building, we have two different vibes that go along with our groups. Our Youth Above the Noise group actually just came up with that name a few years ago when all the noise was going around, and the kids themselves in those youth groups came up with the title of Youth Above the Noise, and that's what they wanted to be. They wanted to be youth that was above all that noise. And what they do in their meetings, they meet after school once a month, is they talk about what happened during the day at school, what's going on in their school community, what's going on in their extracurricular activity. And then through the mentorship of our youth coordinator, they develop activities and they talk on ways to maybe combat some issues that are going on, ways to overcome it. They do a lot of community service-based, so that's their focus more. Then we also have our Core Committed group. Our Core Committed is based a little more on student performance, whether that's athletics, academics, the arts, those students are all performing at some level. And there are certain things they need to do to achieve where they want to be. So we focus a little more on that, we're still building the leadership skills and working together in how they're going to do that and giving them those skills. All of our high school meetings, whether it's Core Committed or Youth Above the Noise, the students earn service hours, which are very important for their graduation as well, and learning to give back to the community as well. So when we put all the pieces of the puzzle together, it really is a four-pronged approach. So for all of our programming, and especially our youth groups, the first prong is the little red piece of the puzzle, and that's our teachers, our coaches, our administration, our school system. We have our parents that connect in with that, it takes the community, and then the prevention professionals. So all of those pieces fit together to create a nice cohesive student and a better, healthier community. And then I want to close with a video that our Core Committed students actually made. So this is just kind of a culmination of the excitement that these groups are generating.
Hi, my name is Becky Hatch. I'm the Core Committed coordinator. Our group participates in activities throughout the year to help students become the best version of themselves. So if you are interested in doing better at sports, academics, or any activities you're involved in school, come join us for a meeting. Stay tuned, listen to our video, and learn more.
Hi, I'm Paige, I'm a captain for Southview Basketball, and I think our Core Committed was, when we played kickball in Northfield, it was really fun to meet people, and people from Northfield that I wouldn't have met otherwise, even though Southview did win. It really mattered because we were more focused on leading people and encouraging each other and just bringing up the community.
Hey guys, my name's Julia Williams, and I run cross-country, play basketball, and I'm on track at Southview. So currently, I am studying for a big test tomorrow, and I just had a super hard track workout, but luckily, Core Committed has taught me how to properly get rest and refuel my body. So I just went to Slovenia Nutrition and got protein shakes, learned about it through Core Committed, because we had a little trivia night there where we all got free shakes, which was super cool.
What's up, my name is Will Reese, I'm the captain of cross-country, track, and indoor track. With Core Committed, I've done countless events, fun things ranging from ice skating with a bunch of people, walking in a parade through the city of Slovenia. And we helped set up a five-point race called the Hot Go Go Run. Without all these events, my favorite was, of course, the scavenger hunt, where me and my friends went all through the city of Slovenia and did a bunch of things that made us look really stupid, but it was a bunch of fun. We learned a lot about teamwork, leadership, and most importantly, power of friendship. Thank you.
The Rockstar Riders, those teams so spectacularly, I was absolutely disgusted.
Hi, I'm Keshav Nodri, I'm a senior and I'm the captain of the tennis team. My favorite event for Core Committed this year was probably Chop. All around, it was just super fun. You looked around, you went in every corner, and you saw different people cooking different things, and it was just a really, really fun event. Personally, I liked eating the food because I was one of the judges, and it was really fun. The entire event was just a really, really nice community bonding experience, and I think we all learned a lot about nutrition and dieting, and how important it is for sports.
I'm not full Michelin stars, I'm too much, right? I hope you enjoyed the video. Follow us on Instagram or Facebook, @CoreCommitted. We have programs at all of these schools. Come join the movement. Have yourself a wonderful day. Peace.
As you can see, our students are so wonderfully talented, as you all know, but sometimes they run into some issues that they just don't know how to handle or how to get through it, and on the prevention side of it, we're here to help them through that, and their families, and the community. So if anyone has any questions, Tori, I'd be glad to answer anything. Thank you for letting us be here today, we appreciate it.
Thank you for the work you do. Thank you.
We are, well, we're now, we're going to adjudge for public participation for agenda items, is this on the agenda?
It will be walked onto the agenda.
Okay, so I'm going to add that the MOU is going to be walked onto the agenda, so if there's public participation for that, we will come in now.
And this one moves over.
Hello, Dan.
I'm Dan Greiner, 4654 Pittsburgh Drive, Slovenia. This evening as President of the State Education Association. And to start off, I just want to say, it brings me no pleasure to be here this evening. But I feel after eight months of trying to bring on a variety of ways to resolve issues relating to the 504 plans within the district, we're working, trying to work with the district administration, this is the only option I've left. Truly, if there was, it is an option of last resort, and if I thought there was a better way to address you, and I would do so. You might be wondering why I'd be here addressing you this evening on the issue of 504s. The SEA agreed to the terms of the memo of understanding by a vote of 45 to nothing this afternoon. After all, passing this MOU typically signals for resolution of the issue. But unfortunately, that's not the case. The MOU does provide relief to school counselors by taking certain 504-related responsibilities off their already full plates. But again, this does not solve the issue. Since August, when counselors raised concerns about the way the district is handling responsibilities relating to 504s, they have been clear they don't believe in a solution. The solution is shifting the responsibilities to building principals. In fact, some counselors were elected to address the issue with administration out of concern for their building principles and all the things that are already on their plates. During mediation last week, time and time again, counselors joined in speaking up for building principals, saying that formally assigning the 504 responsibilities was not a good solution. We offered other solutions, for example, moving the responsibilities to the Assistant Director of Disability Services, which we believe would be a better solution. It would create a more consistent process for completing 504 plans. It is easier for a district-level administrator, rather than a building principal, to have a hard conversation with a parent when a 504 plan is not deemed by the team to be appropriate for a student. A plan like this, when principals have already taken on responsibilities for admin, a plan like this, where principals have already taken responsibilities for administering AP tests at the high schools, was already implemented, and it has not worked out well. Why implement a similar plan for this situation? Time and time again, our concerns were ignored, which is why we are here today. Please understand, I'm not speaking today ironically as an advocate for principal, or as a, please understand, I'm here speaking today as an advocate for principals, not for my own members. This is what we pointed out during mediation. The MOU addresses some of the counselors' concerns. It is the principals, none of whom were in the room for the mediation, who are going to bear the weight of all this extra work. It's not right, it's not best for our school district and the students we serve. In fact, SE officers and building reps are so adamant in our stance of supporting principals that we passed a resolution at today's SE meeting by a margin of 43 to 2, which I will share with you now. Among other things, it asks you, members of the Slovenia Board of Education, to intervene, to direct administration to find a solution other than overburdening our building principals. You may wonder why, if SE members are here tonight advocating for building principals, why they are not here standing with us when we did invite them to do it? why they are not here standing with us when we did invite them to be here? Quite simply, they're afraid to do so. They know they would risk adverse consequences. I hope you take that to heart. Think about it. What other reasons would they have for not being here? Because they disagree with the SCA efforts and what we're proposing? If that was the case, they would have reached out to someone, whether it be me as the president of SCA or one of our other SCA officers or somebody who would have gotten word back to us that they actually disagreed with what we are proposing. But no one, there has been no such outreach. Truly, they are afraid of consequences for showing up and speaking out. That's a larger problem for a different day about the culture that we have gone with. For now, we ask you to focus on the issue of 504s. Please use your voice and your space as district leaders to effect change where teachers and principals do not have a voice for the safe part students. Thank you for your consideration.
We don't normally ask questions, but am I correct in understanding that you passed a resolution opposing the memorandum of understanding that you also passed?
That'd be... I'm sorry, that is incorrect. To clarify, we passed the MOU. The MOU specifically states that these responsibilities will be moved from counselors to administration, that administration will be responsible for them. That part, we agreed to by a vote of 45 to nothing. What we're asking as an additional step, which is not delineated in the MOU, is that you move those administrative responsibilities to someone other than building principals. So as the MOU stands, we agree to those terms. And we are asking you to support that as well. We are saying, in addition, what is not made clear in that MOU, we are asking you to weigh in on and to assign those responsibilities to someone other than building principals.
Can I ask a question? Is, maybe, I don't know who this question for me is for administration, but is the reason it's somewhat, I'm gonna say vague, to give the administration the flexibility to assign it to whoever they think is... It should be. I mean, is there a reason it's a little bit vague to give you flexibility?
Yes, and we've had conversations, Mr. Feller. In fact, if I may speak, a couple of things come to mind. We did go through a mediation process last week. And Dan is accurate in his stance of asking that the responsibilities for 504s be not be placed on administrators, but in a specific administrator, which is our current Assistant Director of Students with Disabilities. However, as you know, that position was added last year. And that individual actually serves to provide oversight and as a district rep for our ever-increasing special education program, more specifically in preschool. As you know, we've been going through a lot of data trends with our MFP process and our special ed population in preschool is continuing to grow. In fact, in 2015, we had 34 students with disabilities in preschool. In 2024, we have 125, and it never keeps growing. Her plate is full and continues to grow. With that being said, we have suggested through our MOU, with the language that you see in the document, that it shall be a building administrator. We have not specified if it would be the high school building principal or an assistant principal. One thing that we also discussed in the 504 memorandum of understanding is this MOU is specifically for grade levels six through 12, not elementary. The concern in the dialogue was six through 12. So a building administrator could be a building principal or an assistant principal.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So this, what I'm reading just says administrators. It doesn't say building administrators.
Correct.
Okay.
So we have flexibility.
Right. And then, so I also think I heard two different... So should responsibilities or should the responsibilities not be with the director of disability?
Should not.
But Dan, did you just say it should be?
Yes. There's a difference of opinion here.
Okay.
What we were to be, if I may respond, what we advocated for in the mediation was for a district-level person to be in charge. And we put that out as an idea. We're trying to work within, be mindful of the constraints that have been put on regarding budgetary allocation and working within the existing structure and personnel that we have here in the district. And so that is why that specifically was put out there as that specific position at a district level. Our biggest concern candidly is that it not be put on the building principals. If there's another way that that can be done in a centralized space with some one person doing it and it's not... And it's some other district administrator. We are also urging that as well to consider.
The way I read is, I think this allows for that. And this does not say that it will be building principals. So I think that this allows that flexibility to...
Correct. And that's why, that's why, Ms. Lapoletta's question. We are in favor of the MOU and we are also advocating for this. So that's why they're both true. Because it does allow that flexibility and that's the piece that we're asking for.
So I want to... Do you believe that, and I guess my concern, and I'm not going to pose this question to you, but my concern is that even if us as a board had a discussion, I don't know that we have the legal ability to direct this, to tell the administration what to do. And moreover, nor do we have the educational experience to overrule their decision. Isn't this something that can continue to be a conversation in LMRC or in continued, or we've exhausted our... I think we are beyond that, Ms. Cochrane. I guess my disappointment and I'm just going to be candid. I understand Dan's perspective. I am pleased to see we have an MOU, but a resolution that seems to undermine the MOU. Philosophically, we have an MOU saying what we are agreeing to do, but then another resolution that says we don't like what we're agreeing to do. So we do have another option to move forward with arbitration and allow us to go through that part of the process. Because I feel I'm taken aback by, and I'm just going to be blunt, I'm taken aback that there is a perception that we as an administrative team have not had an opportunity to roll this out, even to get in front of our administrators, to ask for their input, their suggestions, for principals to say what we can take off their plates. We've had those conversations. Although SCA and SCA leadership may not be privy to those conversations, the one thing that I do take pride in is making sure that we involve our administrators to say, how can we roll this out? How can we shift responsibilities? When I hear Mr. Greenberg discuss about our assistant principals and assessments and AP testing, we took those responsibilities off of our counselors. We've added social workers to take responsibilities off our counselors. The pie is only so big. We are not growing the financial pie. But we all have different work than what we used to do. The superintendent's work looks different than what it did five years ago. A high school principal, a high school assistant principal, the work looks different. We have to evolve. But I feel quite taken aback that SCA is taking a resolution to our board that would insinuate that we do not take the responsibilities of our administrators seriously, that we would not inspect and involve them in a conversation, that we would roll out a plan that just says this is what we're going to do without thinking about having a conversation and input and feedback from those in the field that are expected to follow through with our 504 process. The other piece that is quite disturbing about this is we are trying to correct an issue. We have an unusual high number of 504s at our junior high and high school. We are trying to follow the letter of the law and how we are supposed to proceed. Though regardless of what we've done in the past, we're trying to get it right and do it right and have the process with integrity. However, we have a lot of ground to cover, but we have to do it together. I just feel like these are two conflicting pieces of direction. And if we, I just, this makes this very challenging for me as a superintendent. Because it doesn't feel like if you agree to the 504, then we understand the 504. But to ask the board to have a resolution to the imposed on the building administrators and to our central office administrators...
I don't mind.
Sure.
Number one, to be clear about the 504 and the resolution, to be clear about the MOU and the resolution. We stand behind the MOU. The MOU is there. We are, we are frustrated. But we stand behind the MOU as a resolution of the issue. It does, as Mr. Feller said, give the responsibility, the ability to be flexible about which administration. And we have put out our concerns about how that is influenced. We did not say, again, I'm telling you, 45 to nothing, that can only pass. And I stand by that. And I am here representing the American and the Slovenian Education Association and coming to 45 people voting for that. And they also voted. These two things can both be true at the same time. We have tried. Like I said, you heard my first words that I said. I'm not happy about being here. I don't want to be here. This started in August. And we have tried. And the counselors have been overburdened this whole year long. They've reached out. They've tried to come up with solutions. We've tried to talk. We've tried to talk before staff. And we have tried and tried. I don't want to be here. I don't want to be here. And I don't know what else to do. And you've heard me, I've gone through the list of things and I'm not... You can hear my tone of my voice. I'm not coming in angry. I'm not coming in. I'm coming in with sincere emotion, saying to you on behalf of my members who are thinking about the way their buildings work, about the things that are on the plate, about what they know from the relationships with their administrators in their buildings. We've tried to have the dialogue. I wouldn't braid to you as a board, except as an option of last resort. But we are, to be clear, 100% supportive of the MOU as evidenced by our 45 to nothing passing of the MOU on our side of things.
So your members then are satisfied what the resolution is pertains to them? They're not satisfied as pertains to the administration?
Correct. Yeah, that's what I heard. I mean, I don't think these things are... I mean, I can follow.
I understand. Yeah, I follow how they're not in conflict necessarily. Splitting hairs. It is. I mean, it's... The second bullet says Slovenia teachers strongly declare their opposition. I mean, it's... Or the superintendent or her designated direct and building principals to fulfill 504 responsibilities. And it's not about me as an individual, but it is about SCA and their opposition to directing building principals.
But I guess I'm confused. I don't... The MOU doesn't say the building principals have to do this.
Right.
So I guess I don't understand what the problem is.
Well, I think that's probably in conversations as they've had elsewhere, that it may be building principals. And it sounds like they're trying to get ahead of that and say, hey, we don't want it to be building principals. But it does sound like the language of the MOU is open enough that you could direct, maybe it's building principals or vice principals or whoever, that it's there, but we're resolving disagreements and talking from this issue.
I guess maybe my problem is I don't, I guess I don't believe the administration's going to purposely overburden principals. I guess I may just ask where am I?
Right, we would not. And again, this is something we would have in dialogue with building principals and to this day, with the structure. We, as a central office team, nor building principals, have had the opportunity to sit down and roll out our plan, to ask about what can this look like? What can come off your plate? Because we know everyone's clear as well.
And I also understand there are laws, the rules that we have to follow with this. So I'm sure that complicates things.
It does. I feel like at this point, well, the MOU is on this agenda at your request. You were walking it on. I was not aware of the resolution. I understand that. So I think going forward, we need your recommendation. And correct me if I'm wrong, but do we need to table this for another night? You want to take some time or are we going to go forward? I have a recommendation that I would like to table because at this point, I would like to have more conversation with our board. Because at this juncture, I truly feel that arbitration is probably the best direction to go to resolve this issue. But I also think I don't want to make a hasty decision at this point in time.
And arbitration is scheduled for this Friday. And can that be pushed off?
That's a call I will need to make. And I believe that that would be up to SCA if they also would be willing to revisit an arbitration date.
Maybe after our next meeting.
Correct. Because we have a board meeting on Monday. Correct.
And this is kind of a general statement. I just want to say, and kind of to piggyback on what Ted said, you know, I'm not a 504 expert. I'm not a special education expert. I can't direct administration to do anything because I don't know what the right thing to do is. That's why, I mean, we hired administration to make those decisions. I don't think any of us here are qualified to direct anybody to do anything specific.
I don't think they're equally able to. Well, but I mean, this is just the SCA saying, hey, this is what we want you to do. We're not passing, we're not voting on a resolution. I mean, you were prepared to walk on feeling that this MOU was in the best interest of the district and kids, right? Of students in our district. And they passed it, believing it's the same thing. And now this resolution, which we're not voting on, I'm not sure that it complicates it because it's asking us to do something. Doesn't mean we're going to do it or not do it, or that could be different conversations. I think that's a little bit tougher from the MOU. And if it's good for kids, if it was good for kids, half the world will...
I mean, it does say, declare opposition to directing building principals to fulfill, which does not, is not what this does. However, to direct building principals, my concern would be in turn that if we were to direct building principals to do a certain portion of the 504s, let's say tier three, which is in one of our plans, to roll that out, tier three 504s, then what I am hearing from the resolution from SCA, that they are in direct opposition of administration assigning administrators a role with 504s. But they've agreed to it, so they can't do anything about it.
Right. I mean, they're just saying they don't like it.
Right, so they've agreed to it.
Knowing that it's been agreed to. Well, just what I'm hearing is that they're, they have a frustration and they want to say, hey, we're passing this, we think this is good for kids, but we don't want it to be building principals. That doesn't mean that it can't be.
You're correct. You're correct. It doesn't. But I also would like to put on the record that administration also has frustration. That we too have, and we are not going down the road and putting it in a situation where it's a resolution before the board because our job is to continue to have conversations and to try and hit the can down the road. But to, at this point in time, I think it's important that we press pause.
I address the board regarding the timing of this. We put this as an issue in August. We were not approached, we were not approached to even go to mediation with the federal mediator until three weeks ago. It is a compressed timeline. This is not the way we normally handle MOUs. We were not, we as SCA are forced to react to what we're being told. We tried in multiple occasions to reach out to, in multiple conversations. It was only on last week that we actually got a date for mediation, which is pushed right up against arbitration. It was very difficult to find a first date to arbitration. It may be messy, but we're trying our best, given the tools that we have, to show support for what we believe in and also move the district forward in a way that we feel will benefit children. That's really what we're doing. And I agree wholeheartedly with what Julia's saying. They are separate issues. If you want to go and take mine, the resolution voted on by SCA members and dump it in the trash can, and nothing will...
That's not my point, Dan.
I understand, but what are we supposed to do as Slovenian Education Association when we try since August to have this conversation and it's not agreed upon until May to actually talk about it right up against an arbitration date? If it was that important and you didn't, we're just stuck reacting. We as an organization are stuck reacting. And it's going to end up being punitive against our members because we're just stuck reacting. We can't come to the table by ourselves. We have tried everything we can. And to not vote for it now and not support our members is just rewarding the fact that you didn't, we couldn't even, we couldn't even get dialogue till May 8 with a pending arbitration on May 17. We were backed into a corner. And we do support the MOU by a vote of 45 to nothing. And I really would appreciate, considering we have done everything we can to, with integrity, say our feelings and support the MOU. I just wish you could vote to pass it. We have, in good faith, gone through the passing and we are just trying to explain how concerned we are about things. And we would, I don't, I said again and again, I don't like this. But what else are we supposed to do after eight months?
Okay, moving to 4.0, superintendent's portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Lapoletta. I recommend... Were there others for public participation?
No, it's just Dan. Somebody else sent out? Sorry.
No, I have, sorry.
Oh, you know what's that?
That's because it flipped to being on the agenda, so now it's.
I saw people signing up, so I, thank you.
Oh, that was not on the agenda.
Well, it's already, yeah.
Okay. Oh, Mary. Oh, come on up.
All right, help me out, because I've never been to a board meeting. Welcome.
How many years in you are to?
Oh.
So that's pretty good. It's just a naming address.
Name the address, and. Rodney Rogers, four six three nine Helmhurst. There's three minutes that's loosely enforced.
I just wanna speak in terms of the MOU passing at the SEA meeting. They were strongly in favor of that. One of the things that Mr. Feller mentioned was that you did not feel adequately educated to tell the board, or the administration, what to do for special education. And my point I wanna make is that I also do not feel, as a school counselor, adequately educated to write, maintain, review 504s. This was something that I started, yeah, I started thirty years ago as a teacher. I probably had five in my classroom, maybe ten in the classroom. Now, as a school counselor, I personally only have eighteen, but we average in our building thirty, and there is no limit to those. So yes, the responsibilities have changed. There are many, many other things as a school counselor for fifteen years that have been added to the plate as well. This is one of them that I would say you feel very inadequately prepared to be responsible for. We also do not have any authority over the teachers that are implementing the accommodations that we are writing into the 504s. So if a teacher is not following the 504 plan, but I am the case manager, I have no authority over that teacher to do that, which also kind of puts us in an adversarial position, along with determining whether 504s should be, should be given to a student. If I'm working with a student as an advocate, and then I'm working as that, as a determining factor whether they get what they want me to advocate for, it becomes the same sort of back and forth position. So again, the MOU, I hope, is a springboard to have more conversation. And I would, I guess I would agree with the, if you wanna throw the resolution in the trash that was passed, that is absolutely a hundred percent, you know, understood and your responsibility. But the MOU and sharing the wealth of the 504 or the workload of the 504, I think is extremely important for the counselors. It is not part of our evaluation, it's not part of the national standards for school counselors.
Thank you.
You did wrong for your first one.
First one, we're here. Hopefully you're relaxed.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Ms. Lavelle. I would like to recommend item four point one, the approval of an overnight build trip for North Eu High School cross-country athletes to travel to Traverse City, Cherry Festival, Meyer Festival of Races, and Bull in Arbor, Michigan. And that's taking place in July.
No, sorry, I mean. Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Running in there.
Participate, even though he's a senior candidate. Oh, God. Please call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item four point two, which is a ESC Programs and Related Services Agreement. This is a new annual item that we will bring before you each year. It is an agreement where hereby we, as a district, work with the Lake Erie, Center of Lake Erie West ESC, to ask for an allocation of services that may be needed to support our students with disabilities or support staff across the district in a variety of capacities.
One second. Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. And I am very excited to present our next board item. I recommend item four point three, which is the appointment of Lisa Saab as Assistant Principal of Hillview and Maplewood Elementary Schools. And if I may, before I ask you to actually vote, I have a few things that I would like to share about Lisa. Lisa, I believe you've been in our district since 2011, is that correct?
Correct.
And you have served as a Spanish teacher at Arbor Hills, Northview. I know currently you're at Southview. So you've served in all different levels of teaching, from Spanish one, I think, to Spanish four?
AP, yep.
AP, that's fantastic. One thing that's also wonderful, that we had the experience of really seeing what Lisa could bring to the table as an administrator. She was our first summer school principal during COVID, which was the summer of twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. And she actually held that position for two years and did an extraordinary job when we had never really did it before. We had something small for students with disabilities or EL students, but I think the first year, Lisa, we had two hundred plus, three hundred students. It was a small school. It really was. And for her first time out of the gate, she just did a fantastic job working with educators, with our students, with our parents, with transportation, all the things we would have her, want to have under her belt as she's looking to expand her administrative career. And just for the record, not only does Lisa live in our district, I believe she interviewed for another assistant principals position in a neighboring district that we won't say out loud. But she declined the offer, because really she had strong desire to be here in our community with our families, where she's been working alongside our, with our families and educators and children for so long now. And so Lisa, we welcome you to the team based on board approval. I can't bring the board, but we are certainly glad that you turned down that other position. So it is with great pleasure that I recommend item four point three, the appointment of Lisa Saab as Assistant Principal, and I've made it very difficult for the board to say no.
Any comments or questions?
I just wanna say congratulations. I know my daughter had you, and you were fantastic, so.
I hope she's doing well, thank you so much.
Heard all the things.
Thank you.
Obviously, you have very good judgment that you're saving yourself. Holly.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you, Lisa. I don't know if you wanna say a few words, or? Are you good?
I'm just really excited to be able to start my career here. I didn't wanna leave Slovenian schools, and so to have this opportunity, kind of come a little bit out of nowhere at the end of the year, where I wasn't applying for anywhere else and I wasn't looking anywhere else, it's just really kind of a testament to being in the right place at the right time and being ready and having the chance to step into a new role. I had the chance to step over to Hillview and introduce myself over there earlier this week, and the staff is fantastic, looking forward to working with Chad and Brittany and working with everyone here, so thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. At this point in time, Ms. Lavelle, I would like to walk on an item under the Superintendent's Agenda Items. I would like to walk on item four point four. I am recommending the approval for an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with SEA regarding 504 responsibilities.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? I will say I have some concerns about this in terms of it's a resolution of an arbitration, and it doesn't seem like there's really a meeting of the minds, as they say in legal terms. But that being said, I will support it, because I understand that the SEA has felt well and is supporting it.
Thank you.
Adam, can you call it off?
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. Those are my items for this evening. We are with you, Mr. Terrence.
Thank you. I will recommend items five point one through five point four on a consent agenda basis. Five point one is licensed substitute. Five point three, licensed extra duty. Five point three is a teacher on the RIF list who is returning for next school year. And five point four are licensed resignations.
Move approval on a consent agenda basis, items five point one through five point four.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Adam, can you call it off?
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. I will recommend items six point one through six point four on a consent agenda basis. Six point one are classified hires. Six point two are classified personnel changes. Six point three, classified resignations. And six point four are classified retirements. Want to thank John, Mary, and Deb for all their work they've done with transportation. And Deb, you were a media science specialist.
Move approval on a consent agenda basis, items six point one through six point ones.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
Thank you, Senator Superstake.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, folks, thank you.
Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Okay, we are now on public participation for non-agenda items. Does anyone else have anything to say? Okay. I will move that we go into executive session for purposes of considering purchase of a little property. Second.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.